I'd like to call this joint convention to order. Counselor Donnie, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The people who listen to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark. Ms. Cragan. Counselor Dean Atali.
Here.
Mayor Dean Atali.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Mr. Horgan.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Here.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Present.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now read the warrant for the joint convention. Following matters on the agenda. City Council School Committee will meet in joint convention Tuesday, March 20, 2018, at 6:00 PM, Memorial Middle School Library, 615 Rolster Street in Pittsburgh, to appoint two members of the Monticujuset Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee to fill the expired seats for four-year terms to expire January 2022. Do I read this? Hannah?
Yeah.
I know. I trust you've all reviewed the proposed rules of the convention. May I have a motion to accept the rules?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please read the names of the candidates and conduct the lottery to determine the order of their presentations.
Candidates are Robert A. Babino, Daniel J. Cunningham, Dylan A. McLean, Lisa McMaster, and Brian J. Walker.
Do I read this? I don't, right? Or do I?
Can you just call them up in order?
Okay.
Yes.
The order that was selected, Robert A. Babino is first. Please, Dr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, school committee members, and my fellow candidates. First of all, I'd like to thank the Pittsburgh Sentinel, who in their article published a couple of weeks ago announcing this meeting, gave me the distinguished honor of being an anesthesiologist. Although I know if I talk too much and for too long, I can put people to sleep. But I've lived in Pittsburgh all my life. I've been a family doctor for 42 years. And I'm not an educator, but I've done four years of, obviously, of high school, college, medical school, residency program. So I'm at least a professional student. Every day I go to the office, I learn something, and I think I'm a lifelong learner, which is what I try to be every day. I'm sure there are people here tonight that are thinking, if you're interested in the school committee, why wouldn't you run for the Pittsburgh School Committee? Well, the answer is, a good friend of mine had three of his, two nieces and one nephew attend Monty Tech. And I get to watch them go through the program. I went to the caucus auditorium, watched the programs, saw firsthand what Monty Tech was doing. And all three of them graduated and went on to extremely successful careers. One of the nieces is a first lieutenant in the Marine Corps in charge of her platoon. So during that period of time, I fell in love with Monty Tech, and I fell in love with the concept behind it. In researching a little bit for this meeting and looking forward to what education's going to be like in the future, I came across a book where they mention that the future, they list 170 jobs that will not be around with the next generation and 170 jobs that will be around. Now, for example, I hope no one is on the "will not be around" list, but things like, and the reason for it is because of robotics, artificial intelligence and technology, which I think is the strength of Monty Tech. So people like tax examiners, waiters, waitresses, postal service clerks, things that can be replaced by robots will not be around in the generations to come. Things that will be around have to do with science, health, technology, occupational therapists. The teachers were prominently mentioned in that, and there's, like I say, 170 jobs listed. So what we need to do, and what Monty Tech is doing, I think, is we're teaching, we should be teaching our children skills so that when they graduate from high school, they're ready to enter the workforce immediately. And for those that need extra education, they're prepared to go on to a second or a two-year or a four-year college. And looking at the numbers at Monty Tech, and I may be wrong, but I think their graduation rate for those that want to continue their education is upward of 80%. I tell my parents every day when I see them in regard, their children, is that the greatest gift that you can give to your child is to educate them. And if you give me the opportunity by selecting me tonight, I will do my best to make sure that happens. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Babino. Next, Ms. Lisa McMaster.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, school board members, and fellow candidates. My name is Lisa McMaster, and I'm here tonight requesting that you consider me for one of the two seats for the Monty Tech School Board. I sent an email earlier today to most of you. A few of my didn't have your emails, I apologize, telling you a little bit, and I also sent out my resume. So I'm not going to bore you with that stuff right now. What I want to talk to you about is what my passion and vision is for Monty Tech. Vocational education must evolve. We need to meet the demands of the future. There are a huge skills gap that is happening right now. Higher education is becoming unaffordable and unattainable in many cases. Skilled tradesmen and women are becoming harder to come by. For an example, try and get a plumber right now. They're making over six figures, and you can't get them for several weeks. Same with if you bring your car into a place. Sometimes I can't get in for three weeks because of the auto body. These are skills that are going by the wayside if we don't start bringing more kids into this in the younger ages. To stay viable, Monty Tech needs to stay ahead of the curve. Vocational education is vital to our economy, our youth, and our future. In addition to Monty Tech, they have some innovative ideas. Besides the education and the techs, I see the humanitarian side of it. Recently, in February, 50 junior ROTC kids went to Texas to do the hurricane relief. I was blown away by that. These kids, one of my son's friends, who was a junior, decided to go instead of going to Cancun with his family, he went to Texas to build houses. A 17-year-old kid, I thought that was great. That tells you a lot about the community, that tells you a lot about the parents, and about the school. So I think that that really amplified what the school was about. The community also was chosen back in December, one of two stops in Massachusetts for the prestigious honor of hosting the Wreaths Across America Convoy in December. That was a great opportunity for people to get out there. It was lovely to see all the kids out there and the kids to line the sidewalks, to have this, an opportunity that doesn't come along, and it's a prestigious honor to have that. Recently, NBC Boston in October featured a Monty Tech being the second-largest vocational school in Massachusetts, that they're working preparing kids for the future with a STEM. Recently, a grant for the life science for the Science Department gave them a cutting-edge science lab. There's recently a new veterinary tech program and the grant to the machine technology. It's only going to get better from there. Monty Tech is busting at the seams at this time. New technology is happening every day, the world is changing, and with that, we must change. I would like to see Monty Tech come into the real time in improving the existing vocations with the state-of-the-art ideas and technology, cutting-edge to help keep us relevant in the future, and to make our students more viable to the evolving skills of the workforce that are coming down the road. I look forward to working with the mayor of the city council to improve Pittsburgh's roles in the process. My excitement for Monty Tech will make me pitiful in helping to accomplish the goals of helping bring Monty Tech to the next level. I'd like you to consider me as one of your votes when it comes time for the votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McMaster. Mr. Daniel J. Cunningham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council School Committee. I am cognizant of the fact that my Pittsburgh resume is rattle-limited. I've only lived here for two and a half, three years. However, on my application documents, you'll find all of the things that I have done in the past with the Rhode Island Clubs, Rhode Island Organizations. You'll find that every one of them was involving young people, youth, children, sometimes sick children. One of my proudest moments was serving on the Ronald McDonald House in Providence for seven years and being part of a steering committee that raised $7 million, that put on 18 more additional rooms that we needed to expand the house. What do I bring for Monty Tech? I bring a fresh set of eyes, a fresh outlook. I'm not from the area, so I haven't, soil, not soil, let's use a different word. I've been indoctrinated into the area. I worked over the years in the automotive industry as a service director, as a vice president of operations for service, and I've hired hundreds of kids from vocational schools. And I know what they need, I see what the good ones do, and I see what the bad ones have gotten. I've heard great things about Monty Tech, I've done my research, they have an excellent program up there, I want to become part of it. Most of all, I want to help work with the young people up there and protect Pittsburgh's interest as a part of the school committee for this particular area. If I may interject a little bit of humor, I hear a lot about education here tonight. Well, I was a professor myself at one time, professor at the University of Paris Island. I wore a big round hat, and my students were very, very obedient. With that humor, I will now thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Dylan A. McLean.
Good evening, city councilors, good evening, school committee, and good evening, well-qualified competing opponents for this great position. Something great about me and something great about this exact room is 10 years ago, I realized in 2008, I sat in this exact room at a very similar desk, and across from it was Jim Hashi, and he was the dean of students for Monty Tech at the time. I'm sorry, dean of admissions. And at the time, I was not one of the students that thought I was going to go to college and exceed beyond anything other than learning a trade and really finding a useful career and job and being successful. Because of that, I had to make my case, and I had to plead and tell them that I would be an asset to their school. And I had to think of how I was going to be an asset to their school. My mom always told me, not what they could do for me, which was provide me with endless opportunities, but what I could do for them. And with that, I got into Monty Tech, and I was first accepted, and it was very exciting. I was a previous Gardner student, and I came to Pittsburgh, and I knew that I was going to be okay with meeting new friends in an environment like that. While I attended Monty Tech, I had to keep the thought in mind that I made a promise to the dean of admissions, and I said I was going to be an asset to his school. And so with that, I joined Student Council, and I met a lot of great people. One of them you guys know very well, A.J. Turegney, he was an upperclassman of mine. And knowing all the walks of life that I've seen at Monty Tech, being very involved, seeing all of the different avenues and aspects that they've provided opportunity in my life, I want to continue to give back. So one year, I was able to also be my student class treasurer my junior year. And continuing with that, upon graduation, I decided that I knew that there was an advisory for each shop, and that I wanted to be on one of those so that way I could continue to learn about Monty Tech, hear about updates on the school admissions, how they were going to implement new programs, one of them being the new veterinary science lab. And the funding for that was really interesting to learn about, how they were going to utilize those resources. And I'm a college graduate myself, so understanding all the math and how they were able to use community involvement and the very own graduates of the school to give back and donate to them, I couldn't believe it. So how am I going to fulfill those shoes and opportunities? But while I've gone now for five years out of the school, I've certainly walked the hallways at least twice a year at these meetings where I get to learn and still be familiar with the internal staff that are still there, and not many of them have left, and I have those relationships with them. So when I ask for your decision to qualify me as one of the seats, please know that this has been something that's beyond me, beyond my passions, and it's really a great starting ground for me to get involved in the city and with something that I'm so passionate about. I don't believe that there would be another seat for me anywhere, although that may change at a later date, but this is a great starting ground for me. So with that being said, I just think that I've been preparing for this for a while, and I will work with you guys as a whole. I'm very open-minded and a previous, you know, student, so I know all of the steps and everything going on inside. And thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Brian J. Walker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Dean Atali, members of the city council, as well as members of the school committee. I'm here tonight seeking reappointment to the Monticujuset Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh. I spent the majority of my life in Pittsburgh. I think I moved to Lemnster for about nine months to a year, and then found my way back home. I'm currently married, have two kids, both of them been brought up in the public schools within the city, and my oldest is currently a freshman at Monty Tech. Very proud of him, he's kind of following in my footsteps a little bit, so proud moment there. I am a graduate of Monty Tech, I studied electrical while at Monty Tech. Again, my son's in electrical as well. And I'm very proud of my educational background. It wasn't without a lot of decision-making when I chose to go to Monty Tech at that time, but I'm really proud that I did, and I think that's given me, let's say, a lot of desire and the ability to give, to want to give back to the students, to give them an opportunity similar to what I saw, similar to what I got out of vocational education. So in wanting that for other students, I came before you guys, well, some of you, 12 years ago, I don't want to date some of you either, but about 12 years ago, I was seeking appointment, right? It was a long time ago. And I've held the role on the committee ever since. While I've been on the Monty Tech Committee, I've served on various subcommittees. I most recently spent the majority of my time as it related to workforce to finance. So they were kind of my two big passionate areas. And I've been both chairman as well as vice chairman as part of those roles. And actually, currently, I don't sit on any committee, I'm actually the chairman of the full committee. So why, during my last term, why I was representing Pittsburgh, I was on the workforce and on the finance subcommittee. A big part of that, obviously, was helping to control costs overall to the various cities and towns. I worked with fellow committee members in order to achieve just that. We do have a history where I could say I'm proud of it, of coming in with a budget that's either at or very near net school spending. So again, that's the minimum value the state says we need to spend on each one of the students within the district. Where we're able to, we also put in E and D funds to help offset what we would charge back to those cities and towns. I think it's very important for us to be fiscally responsible at the high school and to assure that we're getting value for the education we're providing for those students. Most recently, as you've seen, we're undertaking a new construction building to add our 21st vocational program. We looked for unique alternative ways to do fundraising here, and actually, through a lot of private donations, we're able to undertake that big capital investment to build that building and really not pass that increase onto the fellow member communities. So very important there. With that said, I think Monty Tech serves as just one piece of the larger educational opportunities provided to the students of Pittsburgh. As much as I'm proud of Monty Tech, I realize there's lots of opportunities and needs for the students in the city. Whether a student chooses to go to the Honors Academy, which I think is a phenomenal program and very proud of the city, the traditional high school, or even Monty Tech, I think it's on all of us and our roles within the city to assure that the students have the best possible educational experience. As a product of vocational education myself, I value this, what we can provide as a vocational education opportunity to the students of Pittsburgh. My firsthand experience at Monty Tech really made me a strong advocate for vocational education, one that I had upon graduation and one that I continue to see and vouch for year over year. While on the committee, I continue to do as my professional experience, I don't bring, let's say, strong educational background in the way of teacher-administrator. I actually work within the private sector, and I'm able to use a lot of what I learn on a daily basis and apply that strategies to how we manage the school district. Those tools and techniques over the year really have put me in a good place and also had me appreciate the fact that in sitting on the committee, I'm just one voice of a larger committee, much like many of you. And it really takes a lot of work and a lot of teamwork to continue to promote and collaborate to implement changes in the district. So I know me and of myself can't invoke change, but I know me working and collaborating with a group can make major change in the district. So if reappointed to Monty Tech, I will continue to proudly serve on behalf of the city, its residents, and most importantly, the students and their parents. So as being a proud parent, I know how important it is as being a parent to the students that attend here. So I appreciate your time and consideration for my reappointment to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We will now vote to elect the first Monty Tech School District Committee seat. Voting is by roll call, beginning with the member who led the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. After the clerk calls your name, please state the name of the candidate for whom you are voting. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Donnelly.
Dr. Robert Babino.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Babino.
Counselor Green.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Horgan.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Brian Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Dylan McLean.
Mr. Stevens.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Babino.
Ms. Cragan. Counselor Dean Atali.
Ms. McMaster.
Mayor Dean Atali.
Brian Walker.
10 votes are required to win. We have Mr. Babino with five votes, Mr. Cunningham with three, Mr. McLean with one, Ms. McMaster with two, Mr. Walker with five. The two lowest vote-getters will be dropped from the next ballot, which means that Mr. McLean and Ms. McMaster will be dropped. We'll go to the second ballot. Counselor Donnelly.
Is it the bottom two or the bottom one?
I heard you whisper. I think it's the bottom one. I heard you whisper. Make a correction, it's only the bottom one that's dropped. So Mr. McLean is dropped, Ms. McMaster is still eligible to be voted. That's when there's a tie, that's the bottom two. Pardon me. Okay, Counselor Donnelly.
Dr. Robert Babino.
Counselor Fleming.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Green.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Horgan.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Brian Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Stevens.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. Cragan. Counselor Dean Atali.
Ms. McMaster.
Mayor Dean Atali.
Mr. Walker.
We have Mr. Babino with five, Mr. Cunningham with three, Ms. McMaster with three, Mr. Walker with five. So now the two lowest vote-getters are eliminated from the next ballot. So that eliminates Ms. McMaster and Mr. Cunningham from the next ballot. Counselor Donnelly.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Fleming.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Green.
Dr. Babino.
Mr. Horgan.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Brian Walker.
Mr. Stevens.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Walsh.
Dr. Babino.
Mr. Walsh.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Zarella.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Boishman.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. Cragan. Counselor Dean Atali.
Mr. Walker.
Mayor Dean Atali.
Mr. Walker.
Neither candidate has 10 votes. Mr. Babino has nine, Mr. Walker has seven. We'll need another vote. I'm just going to go to the side. Do you have a vote? Excellent, thank you. Counselor Donnelly.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Fleming.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Green.
Dr. Babino.
Mr. Horgan.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Caddy.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Brian Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Brian Walker.
Mr. Stevens.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Walsh.
Dr. Babino.
Mr. Walsh.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Zarella.
Dr. Babino.
Counselor Boishman.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Dr. Babino.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Dr. Babino has 11 votes. Mr. Walker has five. Mr. Babino is elected to the first seat.
That was the scariest thing I've ever done.
Put that out in case I hear it.
So everyone back in again for the second one?
Yep, well, except Mr. Walker, obviously.
Right, right, okay.
You ready to go? We will now vote to elect the second Monty Tech School District Committee seat. As before, after the clerk calls your name, please state the name of the candidate for whom you are voting. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Donnelly.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Green.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Horgan.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Kusmerik.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Dylan McLean.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Ms. McMaster.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
We have Mr. Cunningham with five, Mr. McLean with one, Ms. McMaster with two, Mr. Walker with eight, so Mr. McLean is dropped from the ballot. Counselor Donnelly.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Green.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Horgan.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kusmerik.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Lisa McMaster.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Ms. McMaster.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Cunningham has six, Ms. McMaster has three, Mr. Walker has seven. Ms. McMaster is dropped from the next ballot. Counselor Donnelly.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Green.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Horgan.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kusmerik.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Dan Cunningham.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Brian Walker.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Brian Walker.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Brian Walker.
We have eight to eight. We will need to go to another ballot.
A lot of colors. I guess I'm out of colors.
Counselor Donnelly.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Green.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Horgan.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kusmerik.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Brian Walker.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Are you guys ready?
Nine.
We now have seven to nine. 10 votes are required to win. Counselor Donnelly.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Fleming.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Green.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Horgan.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Caddy.
Brian Walker.
Counselor Kusmerik.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Reynolds. Counselor Squelia.
Brian Walker.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Cunningham.
Counselor Zarella.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. Walker.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Walker.
Ms. Craigin. Counselor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Mayor Dina Tally.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker has 10 votes and is elected to the second seat.
The two new school district committee members will now be sworn in by the city clerk.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take a moment. I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and faithfully, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform a discharge of all the persons who are involved in the school district committee. Monachusa Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee.
Monachusa Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.